There we go. Okay. Well, welcome. I'm gonna call our special board meeting to order and the first thing we'll do is start with the pledge of allegiance. Like behind me. I'll move. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice. Okay. And then our mission statement, which, sorry, Dr. Myra, I don't quite have memorized all the way. Oh, and it logged me out. I apologize again. I just checked. I'm in trouble with board books. Okay. Lakeland Joint School District's daily mission is to maximize student learning and ensure every student is growing academically, socially, emotionally, and behavioral every day in all environments, including the current online one that we're in now. Okay. Um, I don't, was there any patron input? Chrissy?
There was not.
Thank you. So we're just gonna go right into the discussion items. The first one was the complaint that I filed and just so everybody knows, tonight's meeting is being livestreamed, so we're covered there. In case there's any question. And we did talk to ISA and they went through everything, so our agenda's good, everything's good. And so I filed an open meeting law violation complaint in response to two of our board members sending emails to all of the board members. The subject of these emails was the live streaming of our board meetings. This topic was discussed and deliberated upon in those emails. This is a direct violation of the open meeting law. All board discussions, except those that are allowed in executive session, which are very limited, it's personnel plus some buying property, buying some property issues. Those are the only things that are allowed in executive session. Everything else needs to be discussed in open meeting. They have to be discussed in public. That's the whole point of that law. The ISBA was very vague in their instructions about hosting online meetings when the whole pandemic started. For our April 14th board meeting, we followed one possible recommendation from the ISBA of recording our meeting and posting it online within 24 hours. During the April 14th board meeting, trustees were asked how they felt after the meeting and how it went and if there was any recommendations. There was no discussion or comment given at that time. During the agenda meeting for the April 28th meeting, discussions between superintendent, the clerk, and myself reflected feeling of uncertainty about not livestreaming the meetings. We all felt livestreaming would be more transparent and more in line with the intent of public meetings. Again, ISBA was consulted with the recommendation, go to livestreaming, but there continued to be ambiguity in what was required. Once the subject was discussed behind closed doors, in an email addressed to only board members, the topic became poison ground. We could not proceed with livestreaming the April 28th meeting as it would have appeared. It was a result of behind-the-scenes discussions. We had no good choice except to proceed as we had with the recording the meeting and posting it as we had before. At the April 28th meeting, going to livestreaming was a discussion topic included in the discussion portion of that agenda. And we discussed that we were going to reaffirm any actions voted on at both recorded meetings, both the 14th, the April 14th meeting and the April 28th meeting, so that we could be more transparent and make sure that everybody was fully aware of what we had voted on and the results of that. When trustees were asked for input or other recommendations during that discussion, none were given. This is when the discussions needed to happen. This is when we have to talk. We all need to, as a board, be able to have a more open dialogue if we're gonna be effective. We have to be able to talk to each other in these meetings. It's what we do. It's what we're required to do. It's the only way we get anything done. We need to just be better at communicating with each other. Ah, I lost my spot. I had to make notes because I get nervous. And I realized that all of this could have avoided, been avoided if, you know, if you just called either Chrissy or myself and said, you know, I'm uncomfortable with these recorded meetings. I feel we need to go to online. Because if you're uncomfortable with something, chances are somebody else is uncomfortable with something. If we're uncomfortable, we need to talk about it in public and figure out a solution. And had that call been made, we would have went ahead with the livestreaming of the April 28th meeting and it would kind of be a mute point. We are all just volunteers trying to do what's best for our students, our parents, our patrons, all staff members. I feel that we probably need more board training. We need to be more effective at communicating in a respectful, friendly manner. When we were sworn in, we signed a code of ethics. I have it here with me. I review it regularly because this is what binds us. This is what we should really attest to being able to do is following that code of ethics. So when we swear in our board member at the next meeting, she is going to sign her code of ethics. I think it would be a great time for us to review that, go through it again. Never hurts to review these things and know what we're supposed to be doing. We have a very specific job and we need to adhere to that job. Maybe we need to review it again. I just wanted to say that we really are all in this together. We, I believe, all came to this to help Lakeland stay the amazing district that it is. We all want what's best for our students and our parents and our patrons. And I hope that we can just move past this and get back to making sure that everyone is making it through this really difficult time. There's a lot of stress on parents. There's a lot of stress on kids. There's a lot of stress on staff. And I feel we're kind of losing that focus right now. And I feel that if we can just talk about this, move past it and get back to business of the district, that would be great. And that's all I have to say. So, discussion? Someone should say something.
I, I, I think that, you know, it, the intent, I think that the training and working together more will, will work this, these kind of issues out. I don't think that, you know, open board, you know, back, you know, back room conversations. I don't think any of that was the intent. That's my perspective. I think that making sure everybody knows what the rules are and playing by the rules and just getting more comfortable having, you know, conversations at the regular public meetings is, is probably where, you know, obviously where we need to, you know, work towards. But like you said, you know, I think we're, we're all volunteers. All, all of us, short of the, the staff members, are volunteers. I mean, we don't get paid any money. We give our time, I think, you know, for the betterment of the community and for the students. So I think that, you know, we have to have each other's backs. That's really what it comes down to. And so, you know, that's what we need to work towards. So like I say, I, I agree. Let's just get, get past this. I, you know, intent is a lot. And I don't think there is any, you know, intent to do something, you know, shady or wrong. So, you know, like I said, we're, the only thing we're benefiting from this is a better, you know, stronger community and a better school district and better, you know, students that graduate and better citizens. You know, that's my goal. And that's mine to say.
Thank you, Rob. I agree. So I'm hoping this, really, the point I really hope we get out of this is that we can just talk to each other and just ask. And it's amazing what we can accomplish when we talk to each other, when we ask each other things and when we're open and honest with each other. We really can do amazing things, especially with the, the staff that we have and the patrons that we have in this district, so.
I would also, I would also add that, you know, during the board meetings, you know, after we get our business and we're into discussion times, I mean, you know, we don't have to be so, so stiff that we can't have a little bit of fun at the meetings. I mean, we used to have fun at the meetings because, you know, we had a lot of, you know, a good working relationship that we developed over, you know, a couple of years. And it, it's fun to, to be able to, to have some, some fun in the meetings too. Because, you know, the public appreciates that too. If there's anybody that ever is in there or watches, I mean, it can be fun too, because we're all people. We all have, you know, different personalities and it's, it's fun to interact and, you know, it doesn't all have to be about, you know, all of the business. Even in an open public meeting, we're still people. We still have personalities and it's fun to let that kind of stuff shine through.
But I think Michelle keeps trying to say something, but I don't, I can't hear her.
I'm gonna mute out.
Yeah, I can't hear Michelle.
Can you hear me now?
There we go. Yes.
All right. With respect to trustee Olstead's complaint, I personally do not believe that of her three allegations, two of them were violations. I do believe that in one of my emails, I did actually violate the open meeting law and it happens to be in my very first sentence and I did learn from that violation. So given that there appears to be a perception of violations as opposed to actual violations, I'm not sure how that's cured. But on your third allegation, I did in fact state that I had read trustee Grissom's email and it kind of validated what my concerns were. And not have stated that in email format. And I do realize that. So I accept violate open meeting law on that particular email. On my other emails and even in that particular email, what I'm trying to do is put things on the agenda. And I have been told conflicting ways about how to do that. And it is my understanding now that what I need to do is just say, put this on the agenda and not support why I want it on the agenda. Because the support of why I want something on the agenda seems to be where you are alleging that I'm violating or that I have violated open meeting law, which I do not believe I have. That was not my intent. There was no deliberation. There was no discussion that occurred and no actions were taken. So I, I do not believe that on your three allegations that there was only violation on the one. And that was on the fact that I did refer to trustee Grissom's email and stating that, you know, I have that same concern. And it should not have happened in email format. And I do understand that. And it won't happen again. So I don't know how we go about this because I disagree with you. I don't agree that everything that you have alleged has, is a violation. I agree that the last, your last allegation, yes, I referred to trustee Grissom's email and that was my mistake. It is a violation and I accept that. The cure, in my perspective, should be that I'm not going to do that again. So with the other two emails though, the premise behind them was trying to put things on the agenda for discussion. At the last board meeting, you had stated that you filed the complaint because my emails were discussing agenda items, but I didn't know they were on the agenda. So there was no intent there to, to violate anything. I was wanting to put things on the agenda. Obviously going about it the wrong way. So for clarification, I guess, I need to know when I have something I would like to discuss or feel that the board needs to consider for action, how do I put that on the agenda?
You call Chrissy or you call myself. The issue is really that those emails were addressed to all four board members and that you did ask for certain actions to happen. Even if it's an action to put it on the agenda, that's an action you're asking to happen with just the board members in that email. That's the problem is that it was the board members in the email. We can't have emails between our board members. It, it, it just, the, whether the perception, if, if the public gets a perception that we're, we're having the discussions in emails behind the scenes, then it kind of just, they lose faith in us. They lose our trust and we can't have our constituents losing our trust. So we just need to not do that. That was discussed in the training with David about not emails to all board members.
However, David, however, David did state that if you're asking questions, you should let everyone know the questions that you're asking and it would be okay.
In the, in a, in a, in a meeting. You, you say, okay, I emailed the board chair. I talked about this and this is what was discussed. And that's how the board members are brought in.
Okay, when I revisited with him regarding this, he did state that, no, he had said, if you're asking questions, you can include the board members. No discussions going on, no deliberations going on. You're just being transparent, which is what we're supposed to be with the questions that are asked out there. So that everybody knows and not everybody is asking the same question.
It was my understanding from his meeting that, that we're not to email other board members like altogether. I could email you or I could email Ramona or I could email Rob, but I can't email every that's why we don't even respond to group texts. It just doesn't, there's no muddy water there. So that was my understanding.
Okay, so then obviously there is a, there's some confusion with regard to the way you understood what he said and what I understood that he said. And in my conversations with him, he did state, he, hey, if we're going to ask questions, we can let the other board members know the questions that we are asking. But what I hear you saying is that you're saying, no, we can't. We have to let them know at the board meeting. Is that correct?
Well, my understanding is that the emails are not transparent to the public. The public doesn't see those. So when we, in the meeting, we said, well, we discussed in an email this and now it's on the agenda. That shows that we're possibly, we're not, but it, it could be perceived that we're having these conversations in an email that the public is not privy to. To me, I just don't want to even muddy that water. I don't, if you notice, I don't answer your emails. I don't answer a group text. It, it, I don't want that perception.
I understand that, that, I mean, no one answers. It's the, the, it's for transparency within the board. What you're saying is, or at least what I believe you're saying is, there doesn't need to be transparency within the board via email.
Not via email, but in, in public, in this meeting. So like, right? If, if you had sent an email out just to one board member, then if this would be the time, so I would say that, you know, well, trustee Irons and trustee Grissom, we discussed adding this to the agenda via an email on this date. And that's when they would be brought into it and that's why the item is on the agenda. When the agenda is posted, the, the trustees can contact Chrissy and ask about any item on that agenda. They have that right. And then she can clarify for them. But for us to be emailing back and forth, I just, I, I just, that's a wrong thing to do. And I'm not going to participate in it.
Okay. So again, I don't agree with you that, that all of your allegations violate open meeting law. I do agree one allegation does.
Ramona, you wanna add to the discussion? No. You can. This is the time. This is, we need to have a discussion and be open and talk to each other.
I was by counsel just to show up and be quiet. That's what I shall do.
Okay. Okay. Kind of hard to get a cure if we don't have a discussion. So the next step would be probably sanctions then. Okay, that's all I have for mine. So next is the written complaint by trustee Thompson.
Yes, I filed this complaint because we were in violation of open meeting laws for the April 14th. Where's my little paper? Sorry. Paper is not always a good thing. For the last two board meetings, the April 14th and 28th board meeting, we were in violation of open meeting law. And that's based on the proclamation by the governor that stated that we are required, though we are doing things virtually, we are required to allow the public access and we were not doing that. Now, before we went to the online meeting, I did pose this question. I thought we were supposed to be having it, we were supposed to be doing the open virtual meetings on Zoom because I did attend ISBA's virtual meeting, how to do the thingy. And that was their recommendation to do it on Zoom so that it would allow public access. I was told that we were not going to be using Zoom. We were doing it by Google. So that was a decision that I felt was made for me as a trustee. Respecting that you were asking, that you were stating you have asked for input. I guess the frustration lies that if we're not asked for input in the very beginning and the decision is made for us, it kind of under, it under, it undermines our authority as, as a board to be able to make decisions when we're told this is how it's going to be. So I did file the complaint because we are in violation of the open meeting laws and I do believe that those two meetings need to be cured. My understanding that we just simply need to acknowledge that, that it occurred and declare all actions void.
In discussions with ISBA, lengthy discussions, we were not in violation, at least for the April 14th meeting, because the proclamation came out was very convoluted. It's so convoluted if you talk to David. But in talking to David, cured the issue of even possibly being in violation of something. As discussed at the last board meeting, our actions are not null and void. We just need to reaffirm them in this, in a more public forum. So that, that's what's on the agenda for tonight is reaffirming. We don't need to, and when we reaffirm, all of the actions are worded exactly as they were in the previous board meetings with the modifications made at that time.
Well, I don't understand how we can be in violation of one meeting but not both of them, given that the governor's second proclamation came out.
I don't feel we're violating because we posted them online and we allowed public input via email.
But we did not allow public access to meeting and that's the requirement by law.
According to the ISBA attorney, as long as we posted it within 24 hours, we met that requirement.
I don't, I, I think you're mistaken on that because when I spoke with ISBA, we were supposed to allow public access, so.
And we did that by posting it within 24 hours.
You don't allow public access. You give them the ability to see what occurred, but you're not allowing them access to meeting. They cannot participate, which is what is required.
It is a, our meetings are meetings held in public. They're not public meetings. So we don't even, in, when we were in our, our public meetings at the office together with the public in front of us, they were not allowed any input at that point either. They were just spectators.
But they were allowed access to the meeting. They could attend the meeting. They could not attend the virtual meetings.
But they were allowed to view them after they were posted and access just is not participation. Access means you, they're allowed to access the information. They can't participate. So we met the requirement.
Proclamation states to allow public attendance using telecommunications devices at meetings, subject to the Open Meeting Act. So I strongly disagree. We were in violation.
And we were going to rectify that for the April 29th meeting, but we were unable to do so. And that's why we're going to reaffirm the action, just like the state board had to do. They had to reaffirm their actions due to communication issues. So that's why we're revisiting all of our action items and reaffirming them so that we are, there is no perceived violation of open meeting law.
So am I to understand that you're not acknowledging that we were in violation of open meeting laws for the April 14th and April 18th board meeting?
I do not reiterate that. But we are going to reaffirm regardless. So that is the cure for that complaint.
Well, why would we be curing something if we're not in violation?
Because we, as a board, have decided that we need to reaffirm these action items. Anything else?
I guess not.
Are, are all the, the, any more virtual meetings that we all have or is it all gonna be on Zoom? So that it'll be broadcast and any participants can enter?
Yes.
Hopefully we can meet in person.
And not have to involve us anymore.
What about, what about the prospect of being able to socially distance and have the board and the clerk and then just have a live feed so that we can actually be together and then have the, the feed for the public? Have we thought about that? Certainly, or is that still because of the numbers, even though it would only be like seven people? Is that still kind of?
I don't know if the governor or the Panhandle Health District has allowed us to come back together in groups yet. I don't know the answer to that.
I can cer, I can certainly, I talk to her all the time and I can certainly ask her. I know that we would have to have a plan that has cloth face coverings. We'd have to have temperatures taken and we'd have to be six feet apart. I'm not sure how that would video in, being all in the same room. We'd still have to be six feet apart. But I can certainly ask if the board would like me to follow through and ask about that.
Well, I was just curious, more of a discussion point to see if there was any, I mean, this is unprecedented times anyway. I, I just, I don't like, you know, the conflict right now and I, I understand, like I said, I don't think any of our intent is to, in either of these issues, is to, to do something underhanded or certainly outside. We have nothing to hide from the public. So, I mean, it is about perception. But, you know, again, I, I, I think that it's obvious, this is, you know, this isn't a super comfortable thing to, to talk about because I feel like there's a little bit of divisiveness and I, I just, I think we just need to cover our bases and move on from here because we're bored and we have to be able to work together. So I'm just trying to kind of get an idea of if there, if something else would work that would, you know, ultimately, I just want us all to, to be able to work together well. So regardless of, I think, regardless of what happens, I'm not a lawyer. I don't know the ins and the outs. I didn't feel like, personally, I didn't feel like we were keeping anything from the, the public, but, you know, letter of the law, maybe we need to do things differently and now we are, but I can't imagine that anybody would hold us, you know, would blame us for, you know, doing what we're doing and adapting to the situation as it is. So I think at this point, we just need to try and do better and, and move forward. Thank you.
Well put, Rob. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Okay, we're gonna move on to action items. So the first one is a consideration of the April 23rd, 2020 report of valid, led violation of the Idaho open meeting law with opportunity to cure. So I need a motion to basically affirm that, that we're going to, we never did come up with a, a cure. We have to have a cure for our violation. For me, my recommendation was board training. And it's better communication. But I don't know how to get better communication.
I, I think that maybe we should schedule a kind of a board training. I, I think that, um, maybe we should schedule a kind of a board training, you know, for all of us so that we can all get tuned up and be on the same page. Because I know that, I know that the newer, I know that the newer trustees have gotten some training, just the protocol training. And we're going to have another opportunity because we have our, our fifth trustee coming on. Um, it would be a great opportunity, you know. Even though I'm super busy, building season is starting, but, um, to come together as a group and, um, kind of reaffirm what, you know, what the do's and the don'ts are and get on the same page.
I agree.
So maybe we, you know, we move to, to address the issue with a, with a, a training of the bo- of all the members of the board together. So that there isn't any confusion.
So Rob, was that a motion you put forward, Rob?
Yes, I would like to move to address the complaint about, um, you know, uh, whatever it was, by, by training , uh, board members together at our earliest convenience.
Yeah, when we can get the ISBA trainers up here too, because they have a lot going on, so.
Yes. I mean, it will take some coordination, but I would like to, to remedy that by, by having a board training.
And I can work with ISBA to come up with a time for the trustees as well. But Rob, if you wouldn't, uh, mind, I would suggest cleaning up that motion. Um, you could say move to address open meeting law violation complaint about the alleged um, violation instead of just saying whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
That work for you?
Yeah, so I, I moved to, uh, address the open meeting violation allegation by scheduling a board training to include all of the board members together at the earliest possible convenience.
Rob, would you mind, I hate to ask this, would you repeat that again with the words you chose?
Yes.
Please.
I, I move to address the open meeting violation allegation by scheduling a training for all of the board members together at the earliest possible convenience.
Without a second, it, it, it will die. And I don't think I can second. Am I allowed to make a second?
Yes, you are.
That was that motion then. So everyone in favor, say aye and raise your hand. Aye?
Aye.
Everyone opposed?
I'm not opposed. I'm not saying aye. I'm mostly concerned with the way the violations are supposed to be handled. Um, acknowledge that there's been a violation, and I don't believe that we have, by making a motion. Um, and as I stated earlier, I do not agree that there are, that all three allegations were violations. Um, I agree to acknowledge the perception that there may have been violation. But I do not agree that your allegations all fall under the purview of violation. And as I stated, I do believe that I did violate the one and the cure for me, specifically the cure for that, um, action, it will not occur again. Which, you know, additional board training is great. I, I'm all in. I was at both of them that we had and I'll be at this one. I'll make my schedule work for it. Um, but I guess I'm just more concerned that we're not following the procedure. It says we're supposed to either acknowledge or not acknowledge, and if we don't acknowledge, that's the same as a denial. And that concerns me.
Okay, so, and then Ramona, are you, um, not voting?
Uh, voting on what?
On, on if we're, uh, going to cure it with a board workshop.
I don't know how we can cure something we haven't acknowledged. I guess that's where.
Well, then it, it's going to, um, I guess we could try to revise the wording or we can just, uh, it will die here and then we'll move forward.
Chairman Olmsted, can I give a little input on this?
Please do.
So, um, you could have the option of moving to acknowledge that there may have been an unintentional open meeting law violation. Um, I know Trustee Thompson said perception of, but you could, I don't know what the board feels about unintentional. It's a thought.
What are your feelings on that, Michelle?
Um, well, absolutely. There was no intention on my part to violate open meeting law. Um, because you are, your presentation about your allegations have our violations, I disagree with you in that. I do believe that one of your allegations was a violation, but two of them were not. So I will agree to the perception that there were unintentional, but I will not admit that there were three open, that your three allegations well violated open meeting law. And respecting that, I am all for more training. I am all for more learning. I am all for learning these processes better and not being, um, labeled a new board member that doesn't know anything. So, I mean, I'm, I'm all for it. So please don't think that my, um, discord is about not remedying this. I do believe there needs to be remedy. I've heard you loud and clear, but I do not believe that my first two, um, that your first two allegations, once, one against trustee Grissim and the first one against me, I don't believe they were open meeting violations, open meeting law violations. So, I mean, I, I can't acknowledge them as, but I can, your third allegation, I will, I will open that as acknowledge that your third allegation was a violation of open meeting law. And to cure it, there, I will personally endure more board training.
No, the motion is presented as dead due to lack of vote. So we can either, um, try to come up with a new motion. Um, and I would just probably say that the trustee Thompson should come up with the wording on that and see if it's something we can agree to.
Can I, can I say something? I think that, um, the, that the motion that was presented was just, uh, to remedying the allegation. I don't think that it's, it says, you know, it had anything that we decided one way or another if it was an actual violation or not, but the alleg- just to address the allegation so that it completely takes care of the subject.
That was right.
When I worded it, I think that I said, you know, um, the open meeting violation allegation. Not to state, not to state that it was an open meeting violation or that it wasn't. It was just an allegation. My, my intent was to, to remedy the allegation, not to say whether it was, you know, whether it truly was or truly wasn't. But obviously, there was some sort of perception or an allegation wouldn't have been met, uh, met, been made. But I think that we can remedy it by some board training to clear up some, you know, to get us all on the same page. So my, my intent on the motion was not to say, yeah, the allegation was true or false, but just to address the allegations and get that subject taken care of. So we don't have any more.
Yay. Okay. I, I under-
So I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to, you know, pin you down and say, yeah, this is, this happened or this happened. I'm just saying, hey, we had an allegation. This is what we're going to do to, to resolve it. Let's get some training together as a group and put it behind us. And that would be my same recommendation. You know, you know, we, I don't think we determined one way or another, and I don't think we need to determine one way or another because are the intents not there? I think that, you know, just addressing allegations and moving on is, I think, what my goal is.
According to the Idaho code, though, um, it states that, um, we either acknowledge open meeting violation stated in intent to cure or we determine that no violation has occurred, no cure is necessary.
Hmm. Well, then, uh.
Sorry, Rob.
Sorry, Rob.
Um, I guess that, uh, if, if, Michelle, if you, if you feel like at least one was, then maybe we state one of the, one of the violations, we can remedy it to.
And just acknowledge the one and let the other two, um, just state that, uh, what was that word? Um, no violation occurred on the other two. So if you would acknowledge the one, then we can move forward with a cure on having a.
Okay. Right. I've already said that. I, I admit. I, I accept responsibility. I, I get it.
Well, let's just drop the other two. We'll just take the one that was, you know.
Really, the whole intent of this is to learn from this and hopefully not do it again. That's really the whole intent. It's not to, you know, cause harm. It's not to cause, um, problems. It's just so we can learn and move on. And so if, if, and I just want board training so we can talk and learn and, and come together.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, so do you want me to redo a motion? Since that one died, so I would move to, um, acknowledge one of the three alleged, uh, open meeting violations and propose a remedy of a board meeting workshop with all trustees to attend at the earliest possible convenience.
Rob?
Yes?
Um, I, I loved what you said, but instead of remedy, could you please say cure? Because we have to cure it.
Okay, all right.
That is wording in the code. It's a weird wording.
That's okay. That's okay. I'm okay with that. Okay, so, uh, I, I move to, um, acknowledge one of the three allegations of open meeting violations and propose the cure to be a scheduled board trustee workshop with all of the trustees present to be scheduled at the earliest possible convenience.
I will second that.
All right, so everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is that an aye, Ramona? I have, I saw a hand, but I'm not sure if it was an aye. Was that an aye?
Yes, for training, I'll agree.
Thank you. Uh, um, any opposed? There we go. I lost my train of thought. During that motion, uh, is, is passed. Great. So Chrissy, we'll get you working on that and obviously, hopefully, it'll happen at a time where we can actually come together and do it in person. And I got sick. Because it just, this is so hard. It's so much better for together. Okay, so then we need to, um, address the second consideration of the April 29th report of alleged violation of the Idaho Open Meeting Law and opportunity to cure. So we need a motion. Rob, you're getting really good at this.
Okay, so before we go into a motion, we have to determine, by law, I guess, don't, don't we have to determine whether, um, we did violate?
Yeah.
And, um, you know, again, you know, I'm kind of on, on the fence because attending, does that mean attending live or being able to, you know, see the whole thing? I mean, in, I'm good either way because honestly, I don't think the intent was, you know, I'll take a slap on the hand if, if, if we did something wrong. Uh, I, I just want to move on from it. Obviously, we're on a live platform now, so, you know, people can, can see, you know, see what we're talking about live versus wondering if it's been edited.
Right. And, and I think we really did try to do the best with what information we had available at the time. And I still find, um, the ISBA's, um, instructions ambiguous at best. And I, I feel there was no, uh, intent to violate any open meeting, especially because they said we could post it, um, within 24 hours. So Michelle, what do you want to see happen here?
I would like to see us acknowledge that we did violate the open meeting laws. Because we, in, in my opinion, based on the information I have, the conversations I have had with ISBA, a converse, conversations I have had with legal counsel, we did violate by not allowing public attendance. And the public attendance was being like they are able to do tonight. Respecting that there was no intent, okay. But the reality is, in my opinion, we violated it. And to me, the cure is, we violated it. Everything is void and now it's already on the agenda for tonight to go back through it. So we're already curing it by holding it on tonight's board meeting. So as Rob likes to say or has said, we can move on from this, from, from tonight. We just, we're done. We know from now on, public will always have access, um, to virtual board meetings by coming on like they are tonight.
In my harder parts, though, I truly believe we didn't violate it, um, because we posted it in 24 hours. So I just, I, I, in my heart, I do not really violate it. I'm sorry, I just can't. But if you want to make a motion, we can have a second and vote.
Okay, well, I would motion to acknowledge, uh, the open meeting law violations on April 14th, 2020 and April 28th, 2020, board meetings held both without public access. I recommend, um, the cure is to declare all actions taken are void and then they will be reheared at tonight's board meeting.
So we'll just redo each of the motions that we passed.
Yeah, we're reaffirming each motion. Everyone that we made in, in the, uh, April 14th meeting and in the April 28th meeting. They're all on the agenda for tonight to reaffirm.
I do have one question about the attendance. Were, were patrons allowed to join the Google meeting if they requested it, Chrissy?
No, it was, the meeting was recorded and posted right after the board meeting to be watched on the district website.
But there was no way for a patron to log on if they got an invite?
That's correct.
Requested an invite. Okay, all right.
Chairman Olmsted?
Yes.
I'd just like to reiterate what we talked about. The guidance that ISBA gave Chrissy, the clerk of the board, was, and they gave it throughout the entire state. She watched the training and reiterated. She got reinforced by calling and asking specifically. So I do want it to be noted in public record that the reason we proceeded that way is because that is what the ISBA training said to do right after the right after the training when we went into school closure. So I am not trying to give my opinion, I just want it in the minutes that the reason that the clerk of the board suggested we do it this way is because our membership to ISBA, that's what they told her to do, and that's the guidance she gave the board chair.
Thank you. So we have a motion on the table, is there a second? So for lack of a second, the motion will die.
What is the motion that's on the table?
Christie Thompson?
Uh, the motion is to acknowledge the open meeting law violations on April fourteenth, twenty twenty, and April twenty eighth, twenty twenty, um, of board meetings held without public access. I recommend a cure declaring all actions taken are void. The remedy would then be that we would hear those actions again tonight.
I'll second that.
Second, everyone in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye?
Aye.
Two to two vote. I've never had a tie vote. So I think the motion doesn't pass due to lack of majority?
That's correct.
I just have a hard, I just have a hard time, um, because if we were instructed by ISBA that that's how we could proceed, that it just doesn't.
Yeah, we were doing the best with the information, like, we-
I mean, if we're told, but, but how do we?
Well, we still are going to reaffirm all of the action items, so we're still going to do the cure even though, um, the, it wasn't officially acknowledged. This is so convoluted.
It is. I just don't wanna take blame, I just don't wanna take blame if we were told by ISBA, this is how we should do it.
And, and Chrissy was in daily contact with them at the time when we were trying to set up those meetings. But we are still going to do the cure, and we are still gonna reaffirm all those actions, items.
I don't understand why we have to cure something that isn't an issue.
Uh, we're reaffirming, um, just for transparency sake, to make sure that there is no question about what happened during those reserved meetings.
Except if you're reaffirming things, because now there is live attendance, I don't understand why we can't simply acknowledge that we were violating and that we're-
Well, so we violated because of the, um, direction given by ISBA. However, even ISBA had an issue where they lost their live feed, and they came back and reaffirmed those action items, so there was a precedent set with that, and I feel we're following that precedent. Does that make sense?
I thought it was the Idaho State Board of Education that went back and acknowledged-
Oh, yeah, the Idaho State Board, they, they had an issue and they had to go back and reaffirm.
Right, because they admitted they were in violation of open meeting.
Uh, there was a, I don't think they admitted to a violation. And then talking to ISBA about tonight's agenda, they were, um, they agreed with, uh, how it was set up and about reaffirming. And they didn't, they did not say we were in violation. But they, they recommended reaffirming just to make it more transparent, but there is no question.
So essentially, we're, we're just covering our bases, even, even if
It's a precaution.
Technically, in violation, we don't want to it's just about transparency. Rea- reaffirming is just an additional measure.
Yeah. So are we okay to move forward?
I mean, like I said, I it, it's tough to be directed by the governing body that, you know.
Yeah.
Well, so, a failure to respond shall be treated as a denial of any violation for purposes of proceeding with any enforcement action. So, okay, that's fine, I can just move forward.
Okay. Are we okay to move on to the, these action items then?
I'm good with moving on to the action items anyway.
Ramona, are you good moving on to the action items? Um, so, uh, the following is for the purposes of affirming the previous action items taken by the board during the April fourteenth, twenty twenty, and April twenty eighth, twenty twenty, regular board meeting, uh, board meetings. The board may take action to approve, deny, amend, post, modify, or postpone action on any of the items listed below. So the first one, um, and these were all copied from the previous board meeting, and the words were modified, when, some of the wording was modified when the motion was made, and the modified wording is what's in front of you on these, okay? So the first one is approve or deny consent agenda of April fourteenth, twenty twenty, to include minutes of regular meeting of March twenty fourth, twenty twenty, HR items, regular and special bill. At the April fourteenth meeting.
I'm trying to pull mine up right now.
Okay. And again, just reminder, these were all things that we-
Yeah, I just for wording purposes.
Yes. But you've been doing so well, Rob.
Yeah. I can't, you can hear me, can't?
I can hear you, yeah.
I can't seem to get onto the-
I would make a motion to approve the April twenty fourth, twenty twenty official board meeting minutes.
I would second the motion.
Just to be clear, are we approving each one independently, or, or is, that is never one, are we approving that as a group?
No, we're approving them individually. That's why I made the motion to adjust the official board meeting minutes.
Oh goodness. Well, there we go. Okay, head back, hi!
Hi, we never lost you, but okay. So there's a motion to approve the March twenty fourth, twenty twenty official board minute, board meeting minutes, there we go. Do I have a second?
I, I think I-
Did you, okay, sorry. Uh, any discussion? Hey, everyone in favor say aye?
Aye.
And I think, yeah, there we go, Ramona, thank you. Uh, anyone opposed? During that motion carries. Now the April fourteenth, twenty twenty HR memo.
Cunningham, on, is she allowed to speak?
I don't think so, um, and we do need to address the fact that at, uh, not the April fourteen last meeting, when there was an HR issue brought up, um, uh, there was a personnel, uh, that was, uh, her name was used and discussed, and, um, that is clear violation of her rights. So we gotta be very careful when discussing personnel, that we do not, um, talk about them in a, in public. That is the one time we can talk in executive session, is when we're discussing personnel, so.
Okay, then I would like to request with the HR memos, when people are resigning, to provide the information as to why they are resigning. I think that's important.
I don't think we have that right.
We have no right to know why someone's leaving.
Dr. Meyer?
Um, I can address that. I can certainly do an exit survey, we have exit surveys, and I can certainly discuss that in executive session. And, but an employee by law can resign without giving a reason, so um, in no way should that be discussed in open session. It is, uh, I feel it is a confidential personnel reason, if they would like, in their exit survey, if they would like to do a letter to the board, which several people do when they retire, they write a memo to the board or a letter to the board, that would be perfectly acceptable because they've addressed it to the board. But if somebody is resigning for personal reasons, that is totally their prerogative. I will, um, take the exit survey information that they give the HR director or their principal, and I will, if it's appropriate, um, I will bring that to the executive session to share with the board.
When you mean by if it's appropriate, under what circumstances would it not be appropriate?
If somebody says to me, I'm resigning, and I'm not going to tell you why, it's a personal decision, then there's nothing to report to the board. That is their prerogative. They don't have to give us a reason when they're resigning.
So if they fill out the exit survey, then we would be privy to that. If they don't, then you're saying we're not.
Not for exit interview, that Brooke gives the opportunity to every person leading the district to have that information discussed with her, um, and if they're wanting to share that, I will certainly share that with the board.
So if they do an exit interview, then we can be privy to that. If they do not, then we are not, is that correct?
Oh, and in the past, we have had, um, personnel write us letters saying why they're leaving, or why they're retiring, or how long they've been with this, we have had, uh, employees reach out to us at the board and, and definitely read those, um, but for the most part, we, that's just too far into the weeds for us, it's, that's not in our purview, really. We approve hires and, and resignations, but we don't that, they're in no obligation to tell us why. Okay. Yeah?
Nothing.
So can I have a motion to approve the, uh, April fourteen, twenty twenty HR memo?
I move to approve the April fourteenth HR memo.
So I'll second that motion. Everyone in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Anyone opposed? During that motion carries, April fourteenth, twenty twenty bill list. So we do the bill list and additional bill list together?
Yes. Yes, those are one item.
Thank you.
I move to approve the April fourteenth, twenty twenty, regular and special bills.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Everyone in favor say aye?
Aye.
Want to post? During that motion carries. Next up is, uh, the twenty, I'm gonna mess this up again, I did it the other, the last meeting we did this. The twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school cal- school year calendar and the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year calendar. That is a mouthful. So I need a motion to, can we approve both calendars together?
Yes, those were one motion when they were brought before.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year calendar and twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year calendar.
I second that motion.
Have a motion and second. Everyone in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? During that motion carries. Next is, uh, approve or deny the soft closure of Lakeland Joint School District beginning April sixth, twenty twenty, and ending April twentieth, twenty twenty, pursuant to the Idaho State Board of Education order regarding the COVID nineteen coronavirus. And I believe that's with the wording that, uh, Trustee Thompson, they adjusted, I think it'd be. So that was the motion that Trustee Thompson had put forward.
I move to approve the soft closure of Lakeland Joint School District beginning April sixth, twenty twenty, and ending April twentieth, twenty twenty, pursuant to Idaho State Board of Education order regarding the COVID nineteen coronavirus.
I'll second.
Second, everyone in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? During that motion carries. And just reminder that, that, uh, the dates, you know, this is from a, a, a meeting on the fourteenth, so that's why the dates are the way they are. So the next one is approve or deny to ratify the superintendent's recommendation of the soft closure of Lakeland Joint School District beginning April twentieth, twenty twenty, and ending May twenty ninth, twenty twenty, when if at such time as local and state distancing orders have been lifted and reentry criteria has been met, allow for reopening of district on May thirtieth for end of year events and last week of school.
I'll move to approve to ratify the superintendent's recommendation of the soft closure of Lakeland Joint School District beginning April twentieth, twenty twenty, and ending May twenty ninth, twenty twenty, when if at such time as local and state distancing orders have been lifted and reentry criteria has been met, allow for reopening of district on May thirtieth for end of year events and the last week of school.
I'll second that.
Second, everyone in favor say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? During that motion carries. Uh, now is, uh, I have to read the whole thing. Can I just have a motion on number five? Is that allowed?
You are allowed to do that, and if you ask for a motion, somebody can say so moved, and we can hear a second if there's a second to ease it up.
Um, we need to approve or deny the, the April, the board meeting for four fourteen, twenty twenty, that's the next item on number four.
Got logged out.
Or is that, I'm assuming it's something that needs to be-
Trustee Thompson, I have added in all attachments that were on previous board meetings, so um, that's why those are there, and that's how they were labeled before.
Okay, thank you.
Good to move on to number five?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so, uh, I need a motion to approve or deny the temporary suspension to policies fifty four hundred, fifty four zero five, fifty four ten, fifty four fifty, and any other policies that conflict with the FFCRA Family's First Coronavirus Response Act for a period of time beginning April first, twenty twenty, not to exceed December thirty first, twenty twenty, and direct the superintendent to suspend any conflicting procedures until December thirty first, twenty twenty, when FFCRA Family's First Coronavirus Response Act expires as recommended by the Idaho School Boards Association.
So moved?
Do I get a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and second. Everyone in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? During that motion carries. Next is to approve the administration's recommendation for principal of Garwood Elementary for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year. I don't know why I have such a hard time with dates.
Lots of twenties.
Yes.
I feel like I'm hogging everything, but I'll approve, I'll move to approve administration's recommendation for principal of Garwood Elementary for twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year.
I'll second that recommendation.
The motion and a second? A motion and a second, excuse me. Any, uh, everyone in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next is approve the, oh, so we're on to the consent agenda, now we're on to the April twenty eighth meeting. Um, this is includes the minutes of April fourteenth, twenty twenty regular meeting with recommended amendments and the HR items. So do we want to do these together, or do we want to separate them out?
Well, there is a correction on the April fourteenth official board meeting minutes that was brought up at the non-accessible board meeting on the twenty eighth. Um, that is still not resolved in the minutes.
Okay.
And then it's uh under reports point B on the April financial presentation by Brian Wallace. Um, I believe it was Trustee Griston that asked about the fact that he had stated um that eighty percent budget is salaries and benefits, and that was not included in the summary of what he stated. And she asked that it be put in there. I did go back and review the recorded meeting, which is kind of nice to what should be it. Um, and he does state, um, given that this is a summary of everything, under funding and expenditures are tracking as expected. Um, after that point comment, he does state that eighty seven percent of the budget, which we're working and operating with just under thirty five million dollars, um is salaries and benefits. And I do believe that needs to be added to that summation.
Chairman Olmstead, can I add to that? These are still the same meeting minutes that I attached before, and the um approval item says the meeting minutes of April fourteenth with recommended amendments. So that's what my implication was with that action item is that, yes, we're adding the recommended amendments that Trustee Grissom had asked for. But you are correct, they're not in these attached minutes yet.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Okay.
Is that all? Any other issues with those? Okay, so um can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda of April twenty eighth, twenty twenty to include minutes of April fourteenth, twenty twenty regular meeting with recommended amendments and HR item?
Sir, I'll make a motion that we approve the uh agenda of April twenty eighth, twenty twenty to include the minutes from April fourteenth, twenty twenty's regular meeting with the recommended amendments and HR items.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Everyone in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. And we need to affirm the appointment by ballot of Zone Five trustee Debbie Major.
Yay.
Yay.
I'll make a motion that we affirm the appointment by ballot of Zone Five trustee Debbie Major.
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion and a second. Everyone in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. And we're looking forward to meeting her at the next next Tuesday. Um, and then approve uh the administration's recommendation for district teacher of the year. And again, we don't want to say who that is.
Yeah.
Surprise.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the administration's recommendation for district teacher of the year.
I'll second that.
Second, everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Wonderful. Okay. Now we're going to, I'll ask for a motion to enter into executive session for Idaho Code seventy four two zero six one B. Uh, no decisions or actions will be made during the executive session. This is only a motion to enter executive session, and at this point, uh, we have to have all other once we enter, all other people have to get off. I don't know how that works. You'll take care of that, Chrissy?
Yes, I will.
Okay, so we need the motion.
I move to uh approve to enter into executive session for Idaho Code seventy four dash two oh six one B. No decisions or actions will be made during executive sessions. This is only a motion to enter into executive session.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote?
Trustee Thompson?
Yes.
Trustee Irons?
Yes.
Trustee Grissom?
Yes.
And Chairman Olmstead.
And we need to stop the recording.